She says she'll stand up. I'll stand up.
You call the order of this regular meeting of the Ledger Town Council, please join me in what's the meeting?
...to the pride of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sam, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis, here. Mr. Drabaski, here. Mr. Eichberg, here. Mr. France, here. Mr. Marshall, here. Mr. Bratton, here. Mr. Song, here. Mr. Sullivan, here. Mrs. Fadke, here. None here, zero absent.
Well, we have a forum. Okay, next item on the agenda is to take comment from residents or property owners. Are they residents or property owners, so they should speak. Yes, ma'am?
Wait, over here?
Please come up to the podium, identify yourself, name and address.
I'm Denise Dietrich, I live at 59 Wendell Palmory Road, and I'm here tonight to talk about the education budget. I've watched Ledger schools grow over the last 12 years, and over the last two years, I can see us taking steps backwards. We need to continue to move forward and not continue cutting the funds that directly affect our children and future of leisure. I don't think last night's concerns even tipped the iceberg as to conveying the concerns we as residents have. Not many residents are even aware that even though we have copies of the recommended cuts, we as residents really do not know the true impact this is going to have on our individual schools. This is due to the fact of seniority bumping and if teachers have specific certifications required to be moved around the school system. I believe once the talks the Board of Ed has with the union and things get closer to approval, we're going to be a little bit even more shocked at how the schools are affected. One thing that keeps coming to my mind, with each additional cut, we are losing more and more children that are engaged in things like music and the Project Oath. What will keep these kids engaged, or will they end up getting into trouble? Then we'll have more problems in the town. We just can't keep taking from our children without giving a little. I stand here today to say, no, we cannot run a quality school system with a lower budget and more cuts. I would like to know if many of you that were at the forum last night heard the suggestions and are seriously going to look at some of those thoughts and ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Just in response, please be aware that by state law, Town Council can't, we can't control specifically what the Board of Ed sends to us in terms of funding by way of program.
Yes.
For example, if the Board of Ed decides that Program X will not be funded, Program Y will be funded instead, cut this teach, whatever it is, we can't, we can't control that. All we can do is look at the number, the dollar number that they say they want to spend, and then we basically get to say, yes, we'll send that to referendum. Ultimately, the people decide in referendum. Or we change that number before we send it to referendum. But really, that's all we get to do. We never get to say, even though I think many of us were there last night, we heard all the pleas for people who wanted to say a particular program as opposed, that's the Board of Ed to decide in terms of specifically what programs did affect. Okay? Any other councilors want to comment on that? Okay, fine. We're still in the public comment section of our agenda. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council? Yes?
Thank you. Come on in. Ed Lyon, 49 Homestead Road. I'll try to be brief because you have a long agenda. I notice on the new business agenda tonight, I'm in 13, is to approve a contract for operations of Ledger Water System with Bratton Utilities. I have an interest in that as the vice chair of the Southeast Atlantic Water Authority. I also have an interest in it because I believe in open government. Now, I have followed the actions of this Town Council back to 2010, and on the 30th of August, I have the minutes, this Town Council accepted the water system operator designated by the town WPCA. The actions of that WCA, WPCA meeting in August of 2010 are not minuted. As of less than half an hour ago, I went to the town's website, which I'm beginning to learn how to negotiate, and there are no minutes after, the last minutes are 20, I'm sorry, are 14 July of 2010. There are no minutes for the rest of that year. So if one really wants to know what the basis for deciding to go with Bratton Utilities versus the Southeast Atlantic Water Authority, one is at a loss. The only thing I've been able to find, and I allude to this with trepidation, is the 31 August issue of the Torwich Bulletin. I don't have anything against it, but it is what it is. The headline is "Town Okays Water Provider Despite $100,000 Bid Gap", alluding to the fact that the Bratton Utilities bid, and there was a formal bid process, and two of water utilities were judged to be fully qualified, the Southeast Atlantic Water Authority Bratton Utilities, that despite this gap, the decision was made to go with Bratton Utilities. I think at a time when people are worried about $60,000 off the school budget and whatever, it'd be appropriate if, never mind me, but the average citizen of the town could see what considerations caused some of you and your predecessors to make that decision. But the point I want to make is, it's 15, 16, it's more like 20 months later, and I still can't find the minutes of that meeting. Now, one of your colleagues, present or former, well-heated, said, Ed, look, you can go up to Town Hall and listen to the tape, but it's in the audio. I don't know whether that, you know, whatever. I just will end with this. I really have great esteem for our form of government and for this Town Council, but I would hope that you would describe, as I do, the concept of open government. And you can't keep on endorsing something alluding to approving a recommendation from an entity when that recommendation doesn't exist in any legally acceptable form 20, 18, 20 months after the supposed action. Now, I said I was going to be brief, and I'm afraid I've taken more time than I should.
Okay?
Sure, I'll be having a comment and point taken, Dr. Monahan. We have recorded minutes, we have been working with town employees to get them posted. We will take that up again to make sure that there are minutes. We'll make sure that they're posted.
Thank you.
Now, having said that, just a question. Completely agree with you. We want to make the minutes available to everybody anywhere. People in foreign countries ought to be able to go on our website and get the minutes.
They just can't wait to find them again.
Don't worry, they can't vote.
Having said that, there's not actually a legal requirement to put them on the website, and I'm not trying to split hairs.
No, that's right.
Are the minutes available?
The minutes are available.
And where does somebody go to get the minutes?
Town clerk, I hope. We will check.
We'll check.
They've all been sent. Minutes were approved by the WPCA, not all of them, but most of them. And as they were approved, they were sent to be posted. I will check.
I appreciate your candor, and I recognize there's still a certain uncertainty in your minds as well as in your thoughts.
You're absolutely right. I noticed it last night in the IT Committee, that we did not have anything posted for this year.
I think it would be everybody's interest if the description in the Torwich Bulletin were not the matter of, that the description of record de facto.
Counselor Davis, do you want to try?
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm personally embarrassed, and I'm even more annoyed than you are. I can tell you that. I'm really annoyed to hear that. Not at you, Mr. Monahan, but I'm annoyed. This has been going on way too long, and why we're putting up with it is long as beyond me. Not upset.
My comment was simply to say, look, we ought to be doing everything we can, and we can put them on the website, so I'm embarrassed that we're not. Having said that, we absolutely must do everything that's required by law, and by law, we're required to have minutes, and they're required to be available to people of the town, and if they're not, then we are coming up short in a way that is, that is, that is more egregious than, we absolutely need to fix that. Okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to comment in the public comment section of the agenda?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Julie Lemon, I live at 11 East St. Paul Road. I was at the Board of Ed public meeting last night, and it's nice to see you all alert. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. I, too, would like to know if anybody took notes, if anybody has any ideas about how to partner with the Board of Ed and how we will not be sitting on next February facing a $1 million type again, which will be three years' growth.
Okay, any ask, what that lays on? Chair Davis, Counselor Davis, do you care if you want to comment now?
Yeah, just like one other comment, too. What I saw last night was our Town Council and our Board of Ed, and the parents and residents, depending on whether or not, I mean, we're, you know, grandparents, children, had children, students were there. I didn't see the community. I saw our size of the room, and I wonder if that is going to, if people are really looking to change things going forward. I think everybody has an investment in this community, that they care about our children as much as they care about the community. I just didn't get the sense that we've all come together, and it's a fresh start. We're having the election, we have a lot of new faces.
Thank you. Chair, just go on, you're not recording.
Well, only, and then I'll defer financial part to our financial chairman. I was just going to say, you know, that meeting was a little unusual. Normally, the council is not even of air at that meeting in past years, so having so many members turn up was actually a beautiful thing. Now, some of us had come from another meeting, so we all sort of lumped in together at the same place, but it was, it was the Board of Education's meeting, so we couldn't really sit with them.
Right. I understand that, but you're residents, and you have students here that may have come through our schools. You could have spoken. It felt like a very big divide, and I think the residents are really looking for all of our elected officials to come together for the greater good of the town and the students, and we all have needs.
If I had spoken, I would have been rebutting some of the incorrect information, one of which I do intend to comment on under Counselor Comments, and I believe Counsel, Counsel France has some financial things he wants to add under Counselor Comments, so we would be happy to do that. But I think what you should take from it is more of a positive, very unusual, I used to chair the Board of Education, very unusual that the Board of Ed was present at that part of the process, because there's going to be, I think we counted like 20 more meetings between now and then. So I think you should take positive from it, that there were so many folks there.
Counsel Frank, do you care to just go on directly?
One thing that, that was not the first time that the Town Council and the Board of Ed have met. I brought this, sworn in, I went to the first one, the Finance Committee, for some, just paid each one a cent. We've already had a joint Board of Ed, Town Council Finance Committee meeting, which is really the origin of where the budget comes from, comes out of the Finance Committee. Dialogue has been ongoing, separately with Dr. Grineer, which is high top, and others on the, on the Board of Ed, both the Finance Committee and the General Board of Ed, to discuss what's going on. Really, the intent of last night was for the public, who was not part of the elected process, to be able to talk to our elected officials. I myself have gone to each one of the meetings because I want to hear firsthand what is going on as, as the Chair of the Finance Committee. These budgets will come through my committee, be discussed. I prefer to hear firsthand from the residents what their concerns are, what their ideas are, and so that's why I personally have gone to them, even though I'm not required to be there. And I think that's the best measure of the interest of the Town Council, is the fact that they're there, listening firsthand as opposed to the Board of Ed taking input, and then the Board of Ed sending that input to the Town Council, filtered through their views on what happened, or distilled by Albert Milson. So I think that's the message, I think, to take out of the public meeting, was the fact that the Town Council's there, hearing firsthand from the residents, as opposed to, as the same meeting for the Board of Ed, to pass that information along to us.
Any other councilor who wishes to respond directly here? I would say, I was there last night, you know, and I got up briefly after two people spoke, and I thought that the two people that I recall, they were, they were asking pointed questions of the council, of what is the council doing, et cetera. And I will, I will say that I'm not sure I was, I said it in a way that people understood my point. I got a little bit of feedback afterwards that perhaps I sounded a bit brusque. Well, my only point was that, say, look, the Board of Ed has their process, and that was their process. We have ours, it's actually in the Town Charter, in terms of what we're supposed to do when, we're waiting for the mayor to give us his budget. The timing of all that is specified in the Charter, and that's what we're following, in terms of what the town budget is going to do. In other words, you know, how are we going to try and keep the town expenditures down so that all of the sacrifice, if there is to be sacrifice at all in terms of expenditures, isn't suffered by just the Board of Education? Nevertheless, the point was, we have our process, we have to follow the Charter, we will do that in meetings. Please come to our meetings and participate, happy to do that. And in terms of anything else the council was doing, in my view, the whole point of the meeting, it was the Board of Ed's meeting, was to hear from the public in terms of what they wanted, the, you know, which programs should have priority within the school budget. If you want to come and say the school budget should be higher, feel free to come here and talk to us. So in any event, that was, that was the point of my comment, if any of that was misunderstood. Yes?
One more thing. Late this afternoon, we got an email from Representative Reynolds, and there was a printout from Governor Nolte's budget message, each town, and what additional revenue they were getting, I guess based on a number of formulas, and it looked like, and I could be wrong, but it looked like we were getting an additional $111,000 in our ECS grant. That's about 4:00 this afternoon, I saw.
So if the state legislature actually approves that budget, the governor's request, that, that may change what happens over on the Board of Ed side.
So I'll make a brief, thank you. I was going to save my comments for Town Council comments, but while we're on the subject. I thought last night, last night's meeting was great. As Dr. Grineer said, people listened to each other, there wasn't shouting, there wasn't, you know, masterful, and we had some very difficult decisions to make as a town. It would have been inappropriate for, for Town Councilors to comment for all the reasons you just heard, but I think it's significant to notice that we were all there because the Board of Ed and Dr. Grineer asked us to be there, and we came. So I thought it was a great meeting. I don't think any of us are going to be happy with the final result, but we do have some difficult decisions to make, and we're doing the best we can. So thank you for your interest and your comments, and we'll keep at it.
Okay, are there any other members of the public who wish to address the council? Yes, ma'am?
Can I just stay here and do it? I was late coming in, so I don't know the protocol.
Well, we do have this streaming live on the internet. People do like to see who's speaking, if they're.
Okay. My name is Stephanie Talbun, I live at 118 Gallipoll Road, and I've already spoken to most of you, and I had a statement prepared for tonight, but I just spent the past two hours at a charter school in New London that my daughter's interested in going to. And as you know, I am a huge, huge advocate of neighborhood schools. I, you know, my personal feelings about charter magnet should be irrelevant, but they're not, and it was disheartening to sit there tonight and hear all these great things that she could do there, that she's not going to be able to do here. She can take bands next year, and chorus if she wanted. They have hands-on science at the beach. It was just, I just sat there thinking, it's against my core beliefs, but I can't ask my child to give up the things that she wants to do because our town's suffering financially. And I know everybody's feeling, no, I understand that, but we really need to, as a town, look at our core values and see how we want to educate our children and the products that we want at the end, and look at all the other services that are wonderful. I moved to this town not for the educational system. Honestly, I had a kindergartner that went to Department of Ed, or Department of Defense School, fully funded. I had no idea about public schools. We landed here because I googled Parks and Recs, and Ledger had a Parks and Recs department, and I thought, this is great, because before the Department of Defense School, we lived in Virginia, had an amazing Parks and Rec, and I thought, well, if we're moving back to the states, we need a Parks and Recs department. So we lucked out landing here, and I just want other families to feel like, wow, this is a great place that we landed, and I want to stay. And I would hope, you know, as we evaluate all the budgets, certainly, you know, there's places that probably could be cut, but we need to make sure that we're offering the core education that the children that went before the kids that are in school now are offered in this town. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we will move on. I'll say to those people who did speak, principally those who spoke about the Board of Education, we, we have no other items on our agenda about education. You're welcome to stay. You won't feel offended if you decide that you want to put up and leave at any point. Committee conclusions and board reports, have we had none on the agenda? Correct? Am I missing something? No? Okay. Next, comments of Town Councilors? Yes?
I just want to touch on a couple of things that we heard last night. One of them was, what are we doing to bring businesses into town? We have an Economic Development Commission that's doing what they can, which almost be the other half of the equation, is business retention. They spend their money in town to keep the businesses here. When I first got on the council a few years ago, we lost 55 businesses. There's no correlation between those two, it just happened that way. Yeah. And these are businesses that employ our students and our seniors, and in today's economy, employ people like myself. When you've got stores like Sears, Blockbuster, Advance Auto, Circuit City, when they're closing stores, that means it's even tougher for the Mountain Pops that we have here in town. So when you say, what can I do to help out the situation? Well, to bring businesses in, we already have, unless you build new buildings, it's not going to change the tax base, because we have all these empty buildings that we're still paying taxes on. What you can do as a resident is try and stay in town with your money. We have hairdressers, we have supermarkets, we have anything you can find across the river. We have hardware stores, we have it all right here in town. So you can help yourselves out by trying to spend your money in town. We have restaurants here, we have everything you need. The other side of that is, does everyone understand how mill rates work, and how it's calculated, and how an increase might affect your household? For those of you that don't, the, the average household in Ledger is worth about $220,000. So you take 70% of that, which equates to $154,000, and that's what you're taxed on. The mill rate in Ledger right now is 27.93, so you multiply the $154,000 by .02793, and that gives you a tax of $4,301. Now, if you want to see what, an increase, how it will affect your household, take your net assessment and add to the mill rate which you think is acceptable, three quarters of full mill. A full mill rate would equate to a difference of $154 a year, just on your houses, though. The grant list includes all taxable property, your house, your car, your boat, anything that's registered, anything you pay taxes on is included in that figure. So again, if you want to see how a modest increase would affect your personal household, run through that calculation and just see what it equates to be. And so a full rate, if you have an average house with three cars like myself, a full mill increase equates to about $170 a year.
Yeah, I just want to add that, I don't think at this point, a full mill, I hope nobody is taking the.
Well, no, I'm not saying we're going to increase the tax of full mill, I'm just saying, go home tonight and say if we want to increase at half a mill, then you add the appropriate amount to that mill rate, and that's what will affect your household. Not that we're going to raise taxes, but that's just how you figure out what your mill rates will be.
Clarifying, at this point, no decisions have been made.
We don't even have the budget.
What that might, what that ultimately might be. Yes?
I'd like to add to Counselor Marshall's first comments regarding economic development and business retention here in town. About two years ago, at the time I was still chairing EDC, we did start looking very closely at the things that we could do to help businesses stay in town. We sent out newsletters, we sent out as many contacts as we could. Unfortunately, we didn't hear back from as many businesses as we'd like to. Let me encourage you, if you're a business owner, or if you're watching this and you're a small business owner, please get in contact with the Economic Development Commission. We want to hear from you. We want to know the things that we can do to help out. Sometimes we're limited, but we do have some tools available, so please let us know. There are opportunities available, and we are very interested in making sure that businesses have the opportunity to stay in town if they want to.
Yes, Counselor Davis?
Three things. One, for those who can't get on the internet, you know my wireless pass code, you can dump on, but I can only, I can only handle five of you, so four of you, so don't bounce me off.
So that's not an open invitation to everybody out there inside the room?
No.
I actually, I fixed it.
Oh, did you? Oh, good, that's even better.
But promise this the second time tonight, I've had to fix it.
We have a new wireless router in here, and it seems to be bouncing up and down.
Secondly, I did want to clarify one, I think, a large error from last night that was, that was stated, and that was someone spoke, someone stood up and spoke and said that a recent planning meeting, we spent four and a half hours of attorneys of legal fees at a planning commission meeting, and criticism was, we should be saving that kind of money. We did not pay for an attorney, I do follow through on that. The attorney that was present was not the town attorney, he was not being paid by the town. He was there as a really representing more developers and helping with the particular project they were working on. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I certainly wouldn't want anybody to think that we would have an attorney sitting there for four and a half hours on a public hearing. That being said, we're keeping a really close tab, I believe, on attorney fees, and just, we're working on that. I did want to clarify that, because I was, when I heard it, I said, we better not be spending attorney fees for a four and a half hour public hearing, and we didn't get that to you or not. And then, last night, heard a lot of good comments. I think the comment to me that was the most chilling was Representative Reynolds' comment at the end, especially since he's on the opposite end of the political aisle from me, and to hear that coming from him was, was pretty chilling, I think is the word I would use. And I talked to him a bit afterwards, and he pretty much said, we just have no idea what's coming. And, you know.
Those who weren't there, the comment was?
Well, he basically said, things are just going to keep getting worse, and that we have to look at regionalization. He said the school system. He said, the school system will not look like it is today 10 years from now. And I don't believe he meant that in a positive way.
Okay.
That had to be no town.
Yes. Excellent.
I lost, I lost sleep over that one, I will tell you. That's what kept me up last night.
Essentially, the numbers that he says, the education cost sharing that is provided by the state over the next 10 years, the likely remain flat, or essentially flat. And that was really the message that he's sending is, if you're looking to have to increase budget in school, you're not going to find it from the state. That was essentially the message. As we know, the increase in budgets that could dramatically change how the schools look 10 years from now. Couple of comments that I would like to make concerning the education process. When I was connected to town council, and I started, I was part of the sharing learning process here, knowing that we're basically geared in, I started doing research and trying to find as much information as I could on data related to the Board of Ed, school system here, other school systems in the area. What I found was that, over the last 10 years or so, our school has been in a declining state of enrollment. We have declined about 15% in enrollment, and our budget has gone up in that time with the Board of Ed's side by 25%. Half of that was made up by the significant increase in the cost sharing that Representative Reynolds talked about last night. But it is a reality that, based on a research done by Dr. Proud, who looked at the next 10 years, 2010, 2020, that we're looking at high school enrollment of about a third less than what we have now. We're looking at 960 now, you're in the order of 650 in 10 years, as the demographics and the metrics that he uses in the process he uses. And if you look at it from a macro level, we have about 175 kids per grade, 7th grade and below. So when those kids get to 12th grade in five years, you're going to have about 650 kids in the high school from here. Now, if some number of those go out to magnet schools and others, and we get the influx from other towns, you're probably still talking about 700 kids. That is a significant decrease from the peak that was at that school. So I think when Representative Reynolds advised us to look at regionalization or other things on how we're going to educate our kids, we do need to look at how we're going to do that in a shrinking population. When you have 1,500 or 2,000 kids in a high school, you can offer a lot of program, because you have the numbers to support that. When you have 600 kids in a high school, you can't always afford, you can't always teach every class that you would like to. The AP classes, you may not have the numbers to go there and still meet the requirements to teach with the state requirements. So those are just some things that I have found in the six weeks or so since I was sworn in and looked at. So we need to keep that in mind as we look at increasing budgets. The other thing to keep in mind is, and I would recommend that you go out and look at the minimum budget requirement and what those are. As we increase our budgets, choose to or not choose to, each time the minimum budget requirement comes out, it sets a new baseline. Since this year they allowed in the MBR to reduce the budget, and I'm assuming that from the Board of Ed's side, I'm assuming that the next MBR will set the new baseline at whatever our budget is next year. If we lose kids in enrollment, there's no guarantee in the future that they will allow a similar reduction in the budget. So we will increase, potentially increase the cost to educate per child, yet provide no additional benefit to that child. So we need, we need all understand the dynamics that are going on. It's not as simple as throw more money at the problem, and it'll get better. There are, there are many things we need to look at, and it's not just dollars. Thank you.
Other comments of town councillors? Okay, same none. Next item on the agenda is review and approval of prior meeting minutes. We're moving the minutes of January 25th, 2011?
Twelve.
I'm sorry, 2012.
It's okay.
Are there any comments or questions on this? Okay, corrections? We have a motion in the second round, please hold on.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackie?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
The motion passes. Next item is communications, we have a communications list that has been provided, communications and reports. Are there any questions, comments, additions? Okay, hearing none. Next item on the agenda is council subcommittee reports. Administration, Councilor Bickel.
The administration committee met earlier tonight. We went over a number of items. We met with Human Resources Director, Mr. Don Steinhoff. We also met with the Emergency Dispatch Supervisor, Paula Smith. We went over a number of motions, which we will see later on in tonight's agenda. We appointed a number of people to various committees, commissions, and boards, and we'll see those on the agenda later on tonight. And that's it.
Any questions for the committee? Community Services, Councilor Marshall?
We still have that, but we are meeting tomorrow night, and we'll be discussing the regionalization of dispatch. We're looking at that again. Sergeant Gilman will be there, along with Senior Dispatcher Paula Smith. This is really something that we need to go forward on.
Okay. Thank you. Finance, Councilor France?
The Finance Committee met last Wednesday, received a comment from Ms. Calvin, comments advocating for her position on the Board of Ed budget. We also received a presentation from auditors, an audit report, which is here for review, just an initial overview. There were no significant findings from that audit report. The Finance Committee is reviewing that report, and we will have additional time with the auditors before the county council leave, next week, to give a full briefing on the contents of the last fiscal year. We have a motion to present it later.
Thank you. Any questions for Finance? Okay, next, Information Technology, Councilor Davis?
Yes, we had a really, really good meeting last night. We had Captain Desmond, from the Stonington Police, who talked to us about and demonstrated something called the Everbridge System. It's a mass call system, web-based system. And there's two components to that system. One is kind of like the reverse 911. It's for emergencies only. And when I say emergencies only, I mean emergencies, as in we hope we never get one of these. So we have that now. It is free, and we do have that. But the other component of the system that he talked to us about is called Everbridge Soft. Is that correct, Bill? Everbridge Soft. And that's, that's for things like hurricane, a hurricane is coming, and we want to put out the word where the place to go will be in case of an emergency, where, where certain things will be set up. And then after the hurricane hits, where to get ice, where to do that. And it's a system where, it's, it's an opt-in system, okay? So for instance, the mayor can send out a message to everybody that's opted in. The goal of this will be to try to get as many people to opt in as possible. But I have, I have great ideas for that aspect of it. I know we can get folks in Ledger to opt in. We've got some great community people to help us with that. And so what would happen then is the people that opted in would get either, you know, could get a text message, an email, a call. Stonington, if you remember reading in the newspaper, the citizens of Stonington really raved about communications there. That's where we want to be. And we were, it's very simplistic, it's just, it was so impressive because of how simple the program is. And the really good news about it is the cost, we estimate to be about $4,900 a year. And I, you know, the question I never asked was, was that an annual cost? And I assumed it was. Okay. So $4,900 a year. And we actually, as a committee, made a motion to ask that that appropriation be forwarded to the Finance Committee, because hurricanes, as the mayor said, who was at the meeting and was very impressed with the system, this hurricane season will be here before long. Plus, we haven't gotten through blizzard season yet either, but--
Or flood season.
Or flood season. This could have been just such a good thing to have during, during hurricane. It really meets a lot of our needs without getting too fancy and at a price of under $5,000, I thought was, we all felt was a really good deal. So, so that's one item we discussed. We talked also about the website. We made some changes on the website that you will, you will see automatically if you look right now, if you can get on the internet. We also have added a wireless connection in this room when it works, so that members of the public should be able to access the computer, and that's where we're heading. Let's see, what else? We have some equipment coming to enhance the video on our, the sound on our IQM2. We have a--
TV.
Big screen TV panel.
Video.
Video monitor coming. Well, we're not going to watch TV, but. And this is all with a grant, all came with a grant, so grants are great things. And let's see, members, anything else I've missed? I think we've covered the training of-- Oh, I know, one, that, that item as well. The IQM2 is going really well as far as people jumping on board, and most of the committees on the town council obviously are on. We have now the Conservation Commission, Historic Commission, Ledger Town Center Committee, the Library Commission, the Pension Board, and newcomers, not quite there yet, but jumping on board, the Zoning Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, the Planning Commission. And I'm like a dog with a bone for the Board of Ed, so I'm working on those folks as well. I know they're very busy, but we want to get them up, up and going as well. So, so we're just really pleased with that. And I guess I would just end with, if you think about, just go back a year ago where we were with technology and where we are today, it's, it's really pretty fantastic.
Well, I want to commend you, for those of you who don't know, IQM2 is the town's meeting portal. You could get to that, it's basically a webpage that you can access if you go through the town's homepage on the web, there's a link. But if, if you look up here tonight, you are seeing nine councillors and one mayor. We all have a computer screen, and high school seniors, and we hold your snickerie, but I think we're sitting up here, it's proof positive that some old dogs can learn new tricks. But if you go to the meeting portal, you yourself can download the whole agenda packet for tonight, which is not only the two to three-page agenda, but all of the backup documentation. And it's a PDF document that's 102 pages, if you put it all together. Now that, a year ago, we would have printed 900, yeah, 918 pieces of eight and a half by 11 pages in order to have nine councillors have the meeting packet. So we're not doing that anymore. So we bought a few computers, some of us are using our own personal computers, a couple of computers for those who didn't have-- You didn't have computers, or the computers they use have restrictions because they're work computers, whatever. But we've spent a little bit of money, and we save, you know, well over 1,000 pages a week of printing. I'm certain we're going to, we're going to make that up, and we're saving it for the taxpayers' money.
And postage.
We're not mailing any of it. So, well, well put. Okay, are there other contributions or comments for IQ?
Just a comment, we, we calculated rough savings of about $50,000 a year by eliminating this paper. If you figure a page of printed material costs about a penny. Half a penny for ink, half a penny for the page, about $50,000 a year of saving paper. And a whole lot of people not getting paper, piling up in their houses, shuffling up here in front of the microphone, so going up. Thanks to Roxanne and our IQ.
Okay, thank you. So some good news. Land Use Planning Public Works, Councilor Dombrowski.
We met last night. We discussed the activities of our Ledger Town Council Committee regarding their improvements on the town green fairground property. As you can all see, the wall going up there, and the fence stopped and getting filled in, so things are going well there. Other discussion that they had were future grant possibilities with the small-town Main Street grant that went through for the next phase of development that we were, that we already have in the concept plans of the town green, which is to replace the existing stadium with a new, either new stadium or amphitheater or something like that, rearranging the layout of the walking path that's there now, potentially some like rain, water irrigation system up there to keep the grass greener, and that kind of thing. So those are the kind of things that the Town Center Committee is looking at for moving forward for the next, the next grant, when the, that Main Street grant comes in sometime later this year. The other thing that they also had done was, if there's money left over from the existing grant, from the work that we're doing now, they allocated up to $3,000 from that fund, if the remaining, to help the Fair Committee to relocate some of the lighting posts, because the new fence and the wall has kind of had a problem right on top of each other, getting some of the lighting, so we'll help out the Fair Committee on that part of it. The other, actually, the other thing we discussed last night, the mayor will provide some updates a little later in his report regarding our favorite beaver issue on Anton Road. We also forwarded the planning commission for an 8.4 review, potential sale of 188 Centigrade Road, which recently acquired by the town for a tax foreclosure, which then added into some discussion of how certain property becomes into the town and to tax foreclosure and things like that, so that we need to look at closer. And also, is, are we actually receiving properties that maybe we really don't want? So, there's some further discussion on that. We forwarded admin, the lease agreement for the, for the Southeast Connecticut Resource Recovery for the use of the space in the Old Delcree School. We also started a discussion with proposed orders for combining the Planning and Zoning Commission. We ended up with, I was agreed, we need to get a little more information to see how well, to talk to the surrounding communities, like mine, planning, zoning commission, so we want to get them to see how well it works, what their pros and their cons are as well. And our final act was that we switched our meeting time to 6:30 at night versus 5 o'clock to accommodate the Air Committee, since they have staffed as president of the Air Committee, so it made sense for staff not to come back at 6:30 at night. Then that's it.
Okay, so you now meet at 6:30 on which night?
6:30 on--
Tuesday.
The first Tuesday.
First Tuesday. Okay, that's Land Use. Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Land Use? Yes.
Just a clarification, because I know a lot of folks here in the audience are interested in how we can save money. And a lot of you know this, too. The town center improvements, as we're looking at budgets this year, those improvements were designed after a lot of study and information gathered from other towns and municipalities about attracting economic development as part of a plan to Ledger Center. And what developers look for is a sense of community when they come into a town, and if the town and the village center appears to be a village, appears to be a community, appears active, and has a lot of traffic and stuff going on, that fosters more development. So the attractive wall with the fence and the whole re-landscaping, the grading of the town green is so that we can use it for more community-oriented events, to present a better appearance for people coming into town. And I think most importantly to those people who are listening so carefully, that was money that came from a state grant. The town is not spending taxpayer dollars to do this. And you could say that, well, we shouldn't spend that money either. The hard, cold fact is that state grants come and state grants go, and if you don't get them, other towns will spend the money. So we're going to take it, and we did take advantage of it, to attract economic development in Ledger Center. We're very pleased for you all.
Okay, are there other questions for the chairman of Land Use? Okay, are there other questions for the chairman of Land Use? Comments? All right, next item, Board of Education liaison, Councilor Davis, anything we've not talked about already?
No, just that their meeting to, the Board of Education's meeting to vote on the budget is two weeks from now, during, at the same time our meeting is, so we would obviously not be able to attend that meeting.
That would be the 22nd.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, okay, other liaisons, WPCA report?
I think I'd like to address Dr. Monahan's comments about the $100,000 gap that was referenced in the Norwich Bulletin. Although there were no minutes, and we're working on getting those, the WPCA has been working with Groton Utilities and will put forward for tonight's approval, a one-year contract which actually represents a reduction in the, in the fees that were negotiated on a month-to-month agreement, which was also less than what was in that article. So, so far, we're managing to hold a line on costs with the WPCA. And I know you want to see it in the minutes, so we'll do that too.
Okay, can I ask you to come back to the next Town Council meeting and please give us a report on what we, what we know about what's happening to the minutes-
Yes.
-that have been regularly approved by the WPCA.
I won't have all the minutes, but we will have a report on what minutes we do have and what steps have been taken.
Okay, so, thank you. Any questions for WPCA? Are there any other liaison reports from any other councilor? Yes, Councilor Davis?
Parks and Recreation, the Groton Park and Rec Director sent our Parks and Rec Director a letter this week. Groton has some special needs programs that they run, and many of our residents attend those programs. So, they have sent us, they helped that other surrounding towns should contribute to those special needs programs and, and thought that, the number they worked out was about $4,000. I don't know if we will see that from Parks and Recs, but just so you know what that's all about, if you see a request from Parks and Recreation, it's, it kind of reminds me of the, of the Groton Library situation, but, you know, I certainly understand they have, they have folks coming in from other towns. We can't offer those programs where Groton can, so obviously something we need to look into, and you may hear more about that.
Do they run charges for those programs?
They do, but they're coming up, they're, they're coming up short. They're not charging, the way I read the letter is that they're charging like a regular fee to the programs, but because they're special needs, it actually costs them more because they have special equipment, et cetera.
But they typically charge more for out-of-town residents, huh?
I just, I'm the messenger.
I'm not telling you that.
Okay, so, do you organize an invasion of Groton out here?
Maybe we could trade them-
Give them beavers.
No, we could give them the beavers. No, we could trade them for use of the reservoir program. That's what they use.
There you go. Okay. Way to open an old wound. Any questions on, any questions at the Parks and Rec, any other liaison reports? Okay, so, on the next item, report to the mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Speaking of, I'll start off where you left off, which is with beavers. I had a meeting, as you know, the public may know, there's been an issue with Lambtown Road extension, that's the undated portion of Lambtown Road. And so, the surrounding property owners have been concerned about the maintenance or lack of maintenance, actually both, on that road. There are concerns from the town side for several reasons. One is that, as you can imagine, a gravel road takes continuous upkeep, and it is expensive to do that, and it takes a lot of time. Also, that road is designated a scenic road, so there are some restrictions on the things that you can do. So, there's been an issue. The surrounding town, property owners have retained an attorney, and I know that they have been trying to meet with the town for a while now. So, we finally had a meeting with the property owners, with the attorney, we listened to their concerns, and there were some areas we certainly see of common ground and where there was some agreement. The issue, however, besides the general maintenance of the road, there is the issue of the beavers, and they are very busy beavers. And you should, you really ought to go down there and take a look and see.
I've never seen the beavers.
See the beavers, and just see what they do. And there's a beaver deceiver down there that they, that someone put in, and it's really a mess, and it's, it's not working properly. It basically keeps the beavers away from the actual culvert. The problem is that if you do get a heavy storm and the pond does fill up there, you know, that, that acts like a dam, and that could just let loose, and that feeds then into Haley Brook, and you know what happens when Haley Brook overflows, as we saw that for six months down on 184. So, we just don't want to the whole ecosystem down there. Obviously, we, you know, one of the considerations the council came up with, and from the town's standpoint, abandoning the road, you know, would be the easiest solution for us. There are concerns about that in terms of access for emergency vehicles. There's only really one house on that, and they're very close to Groton. So, there are some things we're doing. I'm in the process of writing a letter back to the attorney, basically feeding back to him what I thought I heard, what the areas of agreement are. One of the things that we seem to have agreement on is a seasonal closing. We have a seasonal closing certain months of the year, those are the roughest months on the road, and it would certainly reduce the amount of maintenance we would have to do. So, you will be seeing that issued shortly, and I'm sure there'll be additional discussions. I met with Judge of Probate Attorney Nicholas Kepler, several of the, actually, all of the CEOs from our probate district, which is Stonington, Ledyard, Groton, and North Stonington, and he introduced us to this facility, to this process. As you may know, up until the year before last, 2010, we had individual probate courts, we had one right here in town, the state went to a regionalized, as a cost-saving measure, went to a regionalized court system, and there was an election that, it's an elected, it's always been elected, but that's elected by the region. And he, his office is in the Groton Town Hall, and there are costs associated with getting that office up and running. It's quite obvious the facilities he's in now are not acceptable and not adequate for his office. There are some renovations that need to be done, and so, I forwarded the information to you, and there needs to be some discussion on that. We, as a member town, are being asked for a contribution, it's a prorated contribution based on our population. You should know that the reason the court was located there is, certainly down there is very centrally located for the district, Groton being the largest town, Stonington next, and they are a very good facility there. You know, are there cheaper alternatives to where they are now? Quite possibly. You know, we were brought into it late. The problem with this is that the prior judge, the late Judge Palm, much of this was not handled during his very short sermon, so we're facing these now, and there'll be additional discussions apart from the budget.
Mr. Mayor, does the statute say that the seat where the office is has to be in Groton?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so who, who has decided that it needs to be there?
That was-
Groton offered this space.
Okay, so, you know, they offered the space, and then they turn around and say, we need to pay rent. No thanks, why don't we offer a space and say, no thanks?
Okay, and they could say, no thanks, and then we'd be back to-
Well, but that's fine. I mean, I just see no reason why we should pay for a decision that we weren't invited to help.
Why is it the state paying for it?
Well, that's all well and good too, since it is a state office.
Well, that is a very good question, and I ask because this is very, this is a new process, and I asked about, you know, the revenues. The state is very, very specific in what they pay. They pay for the judge, they pay for his staff and their benefits, and they pay for coffee or water.
Or?
Or. Or water.
They don't pay for paper and printers?
No, and then, no, no, they don't pay for any, but they pay for specific items. That is, that is the way it's set up. Because my question was, well, what about all of these fees that are being generated? We pay for our own court at one point with those fees, and that is the way it's set up. So, the cost of running the office, the operating expenses, a number was set at that, and that, of course, is what I forwarded to you, it's prorated. But then, there, there is the issue of facilities. The state does not provide funding for the facilities. You know, Judge Kepler took office last August. He, I think he's just, he's really just getting around to getting organized now in terms of where the office was. Groton offered the space, we were not privy to that decision. I will certainly defer to your wishes.
No, I guess my comment would be, and it's Judge Kepler, that he, his office doesn't need to pay rent unless the, unless Groton is charging-
Groton is charging rent.
His office rent.
Yes.
This, to me, so, we are, they offered a space, and then they turned around and they charged rent. Well, we offer a space, I mean, you know, we have space, offer it. East Lime is offering the probate judge in that district, and they specifically said, you know, we're offering the space and no rent. You know, you pay for utilities and that sort of thing, but, but no rent. This is the theme along with the Parks and Recs, getting a bill from the, from Groton. I jokingly referred before that maybe we should get up an invasion force and head south, but, you know, I guess the point would be that perhaps at an appropriate level, we should make it known to Groton that we don't appreciate asking them, you know, for them to nickel and dime us for the budget requests. We have our own budget issues, and if they would like space that, and pay rent to us, you know, the mayor would come on up.
I would certainly pass along that message. As you know, zoning, whether enforcement officer position means posting, and we have, we already have received two, two submittals for that position. I met with the Director of TBCCA, I did provide you with information on that. That is an organization that Thames Valley Community, I can't remember, but anyway, it's a, it is a social services organization. It is, it offers many services, many of which our citizens take advantage of. I provided the council with several brochures, and it's interesting to see, they, they work off grants, you know, state and federal grants. It is interesting to see that the amount of money that is provided to Groton citizens through that agency. I know because, you know, being the Director of Social Services, there are very often situations that come up where we need fuel assistance or emergency assistance, and they are a source that we look to. So, they, they ask for a donation, and the town has not recently made a donation to them. You know, they suggested a certain number, but they said anything would be appreciated. The reason being, it helps them to demonstrate to the state and federal government the type of community support that they have. Planner Charles Carneau and I met with the Executive Committee of the Council of Governments to review the Transportation Enhancement Fund Grants. That's the grant that was submitted several weeks ago for the construction of the northern part of the Bluff Point to Preston biking and hiking trail. We already have a grant submitted for the design of that, and we actually have a layout of the design of that, where we like that to go, and now they're looking at, this grant would pay for construction. The COG was actually put in charge of down-selecting from six different projects which ones would be submitted, and I'm pleased to say, and I think a lot goes to Charlie for all the hard work he did, but it was helpful that we were both there because questions did come up, and the fact that we were there and could answer them. But I just want to let you know that, you know, I did stress the town's commitment, because one of the questions they, they asked was, you know, there is an, there is a 20% net matching grant. Some of that can be in pine, it's complicated where that money comes from and how it's calculated. Even though I have no authority to commit that money, I did let them know that there was a level of support for that in the town, that the council, which I sat on three years ago, heard a presentation from the tri-town committee, and I thought it was, it was very positive. I know that it's been something here in Ledyard we've wanted for quite a while, not just the northern part, but to connect down to Groton. So, you know, I, I did let them know that there are funds available in the Town for Recreation Fund, and we made the, and we made the three recommended projects, and I was very pleased to see that. There is an issue that I want to mention, no one on the council mentioned it, but you may have noticed in the paper that there wasn't a situation last week where it mentioned in the paper that our police were in another town, actually up in Griswold. I did have a conversation with the police, not just about that specific one, although I did ask questions about that one, but also in general, the issue of our police in other towns. I think it's an issue we really need to deal with. I'm doing some research on it, I, many years ago, and I was provided with a contract, there was, there was an agreement that was signed by a former mayor back in, I believe, 1998 that dealt with some type of mutual assistance. There is also a state statute, but it uses the word "may," you know, the CEO may permit mutual assistance. I'm concerned about it in this sense, you've got really three different types of police activity in this area. You have towns that have their own police force, an example being Norwich. You have towns that have state resident trooper the way we do, ourselves, Montville, and our own police force that goes with them, our own officers. And then you have towns such as Preston, Griswold, North Stonington, that just have a resident trooper, and essentially, they pay one officer, and you get one officer riding around during the day, one state trooper, and at night, you know, you lock your doors. So, I'm concerned at the fact that we, being a resident trooper town, our police are an extension of the state police force, which means when there's an incident anywhere, centrally in southeastern Connecticut, the state police dispatch our police to a certain degree. And so, you know, I was told that, for instance, our police were called to Preston over 30 times last year and about the same number the year before. I think that's excessive, I think that's not a good policy for our police. And, but again, it is one of the consequences of the resident trooper program that we need to be aware of. I'm looking into it, I wanted to monitor, I made sure that the police let me know immediately whenever our police go someplace. I'm not talking about, you know, a traffic stop down on Route 12 or 117 where I don't order, or they see something, you know, I'm talking about some serious use of our police other places. So, it's something we really need to look at, and, and so, if you see things like that and I don't know about them, feel free to let me know. Property transfers, it's been mentioned, and we're looking into that. I have a, I have to call Attorney Langhammer about that to just understand these properties. Okay, and the last time I'd like to make is follow-up to some of the comments that we made earlier about the meeting last night. I, I don't want to belabor this, but I did get up to speak, and as Council Chairman Sullivan said, it was in direct answer to questions that were directly asked of myself and the council, you know, regarding CBS, what are we doing to get business? There's something I didn't say last night that I would like to relate to you. You know, I did mention that, you know, Ledyard has an uphill battle with attracting business because of our tax rate. You know, I've said that for years, I'll be blunt about it, I don't apologize for it. Ledyard has the highest tax rate in southeastern Connecticut, as far as I can tell. That's an obstacle. I, I ran into a local businessman in, in the Village Market the other day and asked him how things were going, and that was a bad question to ask. This is a person who has invested in our town, he has invested in facilities in our town, significant facilities in our town. And I asked him how business was, and business is not going well. And he's, he's suffering for the economy and just other, are the things that are going on in this area. You have to recognize that, you know, I appreciate the calculations that Councilor Marshall did. It's one thing to say, well, I'm going to pay an extra $154 a year, but you go to Dow, you go to Holdridge, you go to our top 10 taxpayers, and you tell them, I'm going to ask you for 30, 40, $50,000, I don't know what the number is, but I'm going to ask you for that much money, when they're already struggling as business, and you would be surprised that the businesses in this town, small and large, that are struggling, and you put additional tax burden on them. Many years ago, this was many years ago, when our tax rate was nothing what it was now, I went to a breakfast at Dow with, with other councilors, and I asked them directly, what can we do to help you? can we do to help you?" You know, water, sewers, whatever, hold our taxes down. Dow just took down several buildings on their property. Why? Because they don't want to pay taxes on underused space. We should be very, very concerned. Dow, I believe, is the number three or number four taxpayer in our town right now. You need to be sensitive, and that's the type of issue that the council wrestles with and that we wrestle with every day when we look at what type of government, what type of schools, what type of quality of life do we want to provide for people. So, again, I didn't say that last night, but it's something we need to be mindful of. We're not just looking to attract business, and we are. The activities going on down in Gales Ferry are aimed at creating a business environment and a downtown environment there to attract businesses. We need to be concerned about retaining the businesses we have in town now, and that may be a more difficult thing to do. I would appreciate your comments, your input, anytime. I've been getting many emails from people with suggestions about things we can do. And, you know, people send me emails. I answer the emails, and I answer them very bluntly. And I'm open to anyone that would like to speak to me about this because it's something that, as was said, we're facing now, and we're going to be facing, you know, for the course of the future. And that is my report. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, questions for the mayor?
Yes, Councilor Decker.
I have a question. I received a phone call today from the minister of my church after she came home from a LYSF meeting. And I guess there was some concern at the meeting that we were going to be closing the food bank at Town Hall.
I was not there. I had previous commitment. I will check into why that statement was made.
I guess the concern that was expressed was that it was talked about that the churches would now become the food banks. But a lot of the local churches don't have somebody at them 40 hours a week to provide food for people. And in the way the economy's been, the use that our food bank has been used for, it was a concern expressed from the clergy and also from myself because I know the food bank is available during Town Hall hours, and a church would not be, and people are using the food bank.
Yes. I will say, and I have made the statement to you, I made it a couple of months ago because I did, we did have a conversation about this. And, you know, we're looking at everything. What we have to look at is the staff we have and the best use of that staff. We have one person centrally running social services. Is a food bank, number one, the right use of our resources? And number two, are there people or agencies that can do it better? And that's the question. I've had some very, very good discussions. I've been meeting, I've met several times with the Chairman of Social Services Commission. And I've been in Social Services Commission meetings. I've made just about all of those meetings where those exact type of questions have been asked. And what we're trying to do is, what is the role of Ledyard's social services department versus LYSF, versus TBCCA, versus United Way? And whoever may have said that may have been speculating. No discussion. I think the discussion I had with you is probably the most discussion we've had. But I will certainly ask Doris, I'm sure was our social services assistant there, and I will certainly ask her what the decision is.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for the mayor? Okay, Mr. Mayor, last meeting, there was a discussion of a potential acquisition of the town of 20 acres of land off of Route 12 adjacent to the severing base.
Yes.
That if it comes to pass, will come to, will be funded by the state through bonding money. Is there any update on that?
I've heard nothing from that since we submitted. The last thing we had was a request for the assessment sheets on the property because they were using that to set the value of the grant, along with expenses. And, you know, the bond meeting meets every month. They should have met right around now.
They don't meet every month. That's the problem. They cancel a lot.
Oh, they are scheduled to meet every month.
They're scheduled, but they don't meet every month.
I suspect with the activity the governor's had, I know they meet early in the month. I could see him canceling this one.
Probably.
But it's a month-to-month. I will let you know as soon as I know that.
Okay, and the CBS, you were rooting for that earlier, but that's still, we're holding our breath any day now.
I just keep alluding. What can I say? More than what I said last night, it's with the state.
All right, thank you. No other items for the mayor? We have no items of old business. Before we get to new business, are there any desires to amend the agenda that published?
Seeing none. First up, we have four items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, and no objections. Roxanne, please call roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
If the consenting calendar passes, we're struggling to keep up with this. That was four items of reappointments of currently serving members of various boards and commissions. Okay, new item, new agenda item number five, administration committee.
Motion to appoint Mr. Jeffrey Culo of 39 Chriswood Trace Ledger to the Planning Commission as an alternate member for a three-year term ending November 2, 2013, filling a vacancy left by Ms. Rodriguez.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Information hearing done. Roxanne, please call roll.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes. Congratulations. New agenda item number seven.
I'll make a motion to appoint Lieutenant Michael Finkelstein as a fire investigator for the town of Ledger.
Okay, questions? I'm sorry, information or questions, comments, discussion?
Information. Lieutenant Finkelstein is replacing Mr. Pasquale, who retired. This is a position that the town really needs to have. There's no cost associated with it. It just allows him to investigate fires from a criminal aspect.
In the information packet available on the meeting portal includes documentation of the training that Lieutenant Finkelstein is recently activated to get the necessary state certification. Okay, hearing no other discussion? Roxanne, please call roll.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes. Congratulations. New agenda item number seven.
I'll make a motion to appoint Lieutenant Michael Finkelstein as a fire investigator for the town of Ledger.
Okay, questions? I'm sorry, information or questions, comments, discussion?
Information. Lieutenant Finkelstein is replacing Mr. Pasquale, who retired. This is a position that the town really needs to have. There's no cost associated with it. It just allows him to investigate fires from a criminal aspect.
In the information packet available on the meeting portal includes documentation of the training that Lieutenant Finkelstein is recently activated to get the necessary state certification. Okay, hearing no other discussion? Roxanne, please call roll.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, motion passes. New agenda item number eight.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement between the town of Ledyard and Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resource Recovery Authority for the use of a portion of the former Gales Ferry School building located on 7 Earl Butte Road, Gales Ferry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for information for people here at this meeting or watching. We had a public hearing on this lease prior to this meeting, and we took a public comment of which there was only one. But we are proposing to authorize the mayor to sign a lease with an agency known as SCARA, which stands for Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resources Recovery Authority. They're basically recycling, and they are currently in a portion of the Old Gales Ferry School, and they will be staying there at about $1,000. So, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing done. Roxanne, please call roll.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes. Okay, new agenda item number nine.
The administration committee will move this forward.
Okay, item 10.
Motion to set a public hearing date for April 11, 2012 at 6:45 p.m. to be held in the Council Chamber's Annex Building to receive comment and recommendations regarding the proposed amendments to ordinance 126, ordinance creating a defined contribution plan for the town of Ledger as contained in the draft dated February 1, 2012.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and the motion is to set a public hearing date in April for considering changes to the ordinance. Okay, is there any discussion on setting a public hearing date? Okay, hearing done. Roxanne, please call roll.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, motion passes. Number 11?
This did not get moved forward. We have a number of issues that we're discussing.
Okay, and for those trying to follow us, new agenda item number 11 was on a proposed flight ordinance, but that has not been approved yet, so we will take no action here. Okay, new agenda item number 12, finance.
Make a motion to grant a bid waiver to Charles Pasterback Jr. Incorporated, about not to exceed $90,000 as follows. One, Rose Hill Road, fine grading with contingency, $21,000. And two, Highland subdivision resurfacing with sewer manhood removal slash replacement with fine grading backfilling with contingency, $69,000.
Second. Okay, motion and a second, discussion?
This work is in concert with Rose Hill's project, Highland subdivision project that is, you know, a floor of $60,000. And this is essentially the prep work and the finish work, before and after. This company has on the state's approval list for contract. It also happens to be the principal contractor doing the work. So, the coordination of the effort will be much better by having the same person doing the prep work, then the actual contract and finish work. He has done a number of working within the town. It was presented, was a copy of what was expected.
Okay, any questions for finance, discussion?
In the Highlands, Rose Hill Road is the first, but in the Highlands subdivision resurfacing will be on Highland Drive, Country Club Drive, and Cartridge Trail. There'll be some happy residents.
Yeah, well, they'll be happy it's being done, but they'll be unhappy while they're doing it. So, you should at least tell them the roads.
One of the worst roads in Ledyard.
Yes.
Okay.
Rose Hill is really the worst.
Said what? The plan for Rose Hill Road is in April of 2012, and the drainage work in the Highlands is going to start in March of 2012.
Mr. Chairman, I just think time is speaking of Rose Hill Road. There, you may know that, or you may not, obviously, you may or may not. There are some issues. We are up there. We did mark some of the trees up there.
The tree warden did that.
In keeping with the state statute or the tree warden to let people know that we may be cutting trees down for that because if we do that road, or we do any road, we're going to do it up to the standards it needs to be. Unfortunately, you know, some of the trees that we posted, one in particular is a 300-year-old something tree.
The one that's damaging the road the most.
Yes. So, you know, our great wisdom will be required here because tree side cutting, you'll find, is, again, it's like plowing snow. It's in the eye of the beholder.
It's also a stain of roads.
And some people love what you do. You know, I was up on Seaberry and Esker Drive, and there are people who are concerned about what we're doing. And there are other people that are marking trees for us, you know, and asking for, you know, chips and some people. So, I did a non-scientific call by stopping and speaking to somebody who was walking their dog, and they were loving walking their dog. But Rose Hill, it's going to be a problem, and I've spoken with Steve Maslin about it. And the concern may be, you know, you really can't do that road with that. And personally, I don't like cutting down 300-year-old trees. So, the decision may be made that we don't do Rose Hill Road. And, you know.
Why don't we do the top of Rose Hill Road down the other side and don't do the front of that tree? Because the top of the road's the worst.
Okay, so then people come flying off the good part.
Right into the tree.
They're doing that now anyway. Why don't you do that 300-year-old tree?
We went through this a couple of years ago on Route 214. I was as unhappy as anyone when the state came through on 214, the lower part, and cut down some beautiful trees along that road. And there are others that are still there. It's what's required to do because you know what happens eventually with those trees. So, I just want to give you also notice, since you are voting on this, that it's been posted, there's a 10-day notice that's given, and I assure you, you know, it's going to the planning, it's going to the planning commission. That's the process. And I will be fascinated because the planning commission usually favors just about anything. I can't wait to see how they handle.
The tree.
300-year-old trees. So, if you hear anything, let me know, but I plan to watch that, and we may make some interesting decisions. Thank you.
Trying to find it on Uncle Matt's.
Rose Hill Road is one of those nether roads.
Can I drive all the time?
Yeah.
Just have this deck out there.
Linda will find the question.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second, and no other discussion? Roxanne, please call roll.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes. Okay, under general items, new agenda item number 13, Councilor Song.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign one-year agreement dated February 1, 2012, between the City of Groton and Groton Utilities and the Town of Ledyard to operate the water systems owned by the Town of Ledyard effective February 1, 2012 through January 31, 2013.
Second.
This is the long-awaited contract of Groton Utilities. We've been operating under a two-month extension for over a year. During that time, Groton Utilities has, at the request of the WBCA, closed the Highlands Well Field, flows into Mott Ball. And by doing that, we have saved operating expense of running that well field and maintaining it, even though we don't use it. And Groton has come forward with a reduced price proposal as a result of the cost savings as well as the efficiencies they have gained in learning our water system. So, the new monthly cost to run our water systems has gone from approximately $30,000, maybe $32,000, I can't remember, down to $26,000 a month. All of the other terms remain the same as the interim operating agreement. What we're doing is taking advantage of a reduction in costs achieved through efficiencies as well as the opportunity to run the system for a year while we continue to work on our finances and get a better understanding of our revenues and our expenses.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, hearing done. Roxanne?
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, the motion passes.